All right, we'll call to order South Bay Township Planning Commission Meeting July 24th, 2025 to order, and we'll start with our rule call, please.
Tom McNemma.
Here.
Doug Kane.
Here.
Joseph Johnson, not present. Jamie Nolan.
Here.
Danny Serrano, not present, and also Jason Palovich.
Here.
And Chris Seymour.
Here.
Stand for a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our minutes from our June 26, 2025 meeting. Anyone have comments or questions in the minutes? We get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Jamie, second by Doug, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Old business, we have nine, new business, review and discuss SP 01 2025 South Bay Township School District Bus Depot, preliminary and final land development application parcel 405 G7 Zoned R2. The proposed project involves the development of a new bus depot facility for the South Bay Township School District at 4434 Battle Ridge Road. Project includes construction of a two-story bus depot building with an integrated maintenance garage, a bus wash bay, support facilities, as well as associated site improvements, including paved parking areas, stormwater management, infrastructure. All right, so we accepted this last month, and you met with representatives in wherever this plan?
We have.
All right, where can we start for the review?
You know what, it might make sense for the applicant to kind of give us a brief rundown again on the project if you're okay with that, and then we can dive into our review letter and some of the other submittals on the project.
Yep, very good.
All right, good evening, John Frederick with Civil and Environmental Consultants, a civil engineer and surveyor of record for the project on behalf of the South Bay Township School District. Again, as we presented to you last month for acceptance, this is the relocation of the bus, terminal bus depot from the south end of the site on the main campus on the east side of Old Oakdale Road, moving it to the 114 acre parcel on the west side of Old Oakdale Road, south of Battle Ridge. So again, our site plan is presented on the screen there is a connection on Old Oakdale Road, and it's kind of a serpentine entrance into the site. Elevation difference, again, pointing out some of the changes here, the elevation change from the entrance is about 50 feet on elevation 1250 at the intersection at Old Oakdale, and that drops into the site. The building itself, which is on the north side, so looking on the screen there, north is to the right. The building has two floor elevations. The top is about a 3,600 square foot office space above the full ground floor, which is the bus maintenance area for maintenance. There's a wash facility on the west side of the building, but for office space, that's on the upper level where we've got parking for visitors and ADA accessible parking stalls. The bus depot parking itself, we have spaces for 51 full-size buses, 32 vans, and a total of 93 vehicle car parking on the bus side itself. So in the event that full occupancy of buses, again, they're shy of the 51 buses today, but again, based on expansion and the ability to provide a few excess parking spaces for buses, we have a total parking count for that lower level of the vans and buses of 83 total. We provided 93 additional car spaces, so when the drivers come in, they park their vehicles within the field of the bus parking, walk to their bus and start their route. So again, the logistics of the operations here is the drivers show up well in advance of the start of the school day, park their own personal vehicles, walk to their bus, and hit their routes, so they will come back onto Old Oakdale Road. And based on some discussions with the school district, we've learned that about 70% of the bus traffic heads in a south direction, making a right onto Old Oakdale Road, and about 30% make a left and head northward on Old Oakdale Road towards Battle Ridge. Again, the building itself is about 20,000 square feet. The ceiling height of the building is 20 feet 8 inches, clear height for the buses and the lifts associated with the bus maintenance operations. So as the buses come back, they are able to refuel. There is a proposed diesel as well as regular gasoline tanks, and that's currently at their operations now, so those will be relocated. We are working with Steel City Fueling for the relocation of those tanks and any regulatory issues that might play into that in regard to the pumps. For winter maintenance, as the buses leave, there is a snow brush built into the site development, so as the buses leave, they can go under the brush and it clears the top of the vehicles before it hit the road and don't carry snow onto the roadways. That itself, again, specifically, we've submitted plans to County Conservation District for the MPDS general permits, which included some general permits for the outfalls. We have a detention basin on the west side of the property, just below the bus parking area itself. We've done extensive geotechnical evaluations, infiltration testing. We've coordinated with the Township SOAR Authority for a SOAR extension that meanders down the valley and connects to the Heinzdale area, which are the two cul-de-sacs, I believe. One is Interlaken, and the one on the west is Heinzdale. So we're connecting the SOAR down into the valley. Other utilities are served off of Old Oakdale Road. We've provided the landscape plans, site lighting plans. We provided the building elevations and a floor plan. Could you go to the building rendering site? Yeah, yes. Again, we've showed this at the last meeting, but yeah, right there. That is that two-story building, so again, the finished floor of that red brick building, which is the upper level, is at elevation 1,200, which again is sitting 50 feet below Old Oakdale Road, and the bus terminal, the bus maintenance garage, the finished floor is again 21 feet below that at about 1,179. So again, it's well-hidden, it's recessed well below Old Oakdale Road. Aesthetically, trying to match the aesthetics and the architectural finishes of all the building campuses up above. We did receive the comment letter in the review technical comments dated July 17th, I think it is, yes. We're prepared to address all those in writing and submit those back as early as next week, following tonight's meeting. We did submit, per the review comments, there's four waiver requests that we did submit waivers on, two being the traffic study as well as the traffic impact fee, because again, this is an existing facility. We're physically just relocating the use from one side of Old Oakdale to the other, so there's no increase in trips. The third one was relative to the wetland buffer yards. Again, we're not impacting any wetlands or streams, but there is a minor encroachment in one of the buffers of the wetland that actually is upstream and up gradient of the project site. And the last waiver was waiver request, or at least consideration of the sidewalk requirement for the frontage. Our letter indicated the frontage of Old Oakdale, but we understand that that would also include Battle Ridge frontage as well. So we would resubmit the waiver request. Again, the school district is very much open to a sidewalk, but again, I think when we met with staff here a couple of weeks ago, we had a lengthy discussion about the location of the sidewalk. In some cases, it's not practical or feasible to construct on our side, at least the bus depot side of Old Oakdale because of topographic conditions, as well as the majority of the sidewalk is on the east side of Old Oakdale approaching the school property. So there was a discussion possibly just issuing a fee in lieu of to cover the cost of the sidewalk or the township's discretion to build the sidewalks or to build the sidewalk solely on the main campus side or the east side of Old Oakdale Road. With that, if there's any specific questions, something I didn't cover, or clarity, I'd be happy to do so.
John, I think you summed that up very well. I appreciate you doing that. I do want to go through a few of the items that maybe weren't touched on from our letter just to make sure that we're in concurrence on that. Again, our letter is dated July 17th. John noted the modifications that were outlined within there. One of the items right off the bat was the zoning. We are asking for a narrative just demonstrating compliance with the intended permitted principal use. It was our assumption that you were going under the essential services use for this, which I think is the most fitting for this, but if you could please provide a narrative to that, just so that item is covered. Outside of that, so there's some stormwater items that are more administrative in nature, nothing that are deal breakers as far as the site development goes. We were in agreement with the traffic impact fee waiver on this item. I mean, considering this is simply moving this facility from one side of the same use to the other side of the road on the adjacent commonly-owned parcel, we felt that for this particular development, the traffic study and traffic impact fees wouldn't apply to this project. Now, in several staff meetings and concurrences with the consultants, I'm sure that the Planning Commission and others are aware that there's a second project coming in for the new primary school. At that point in time, we would want a full study with counts and whatnot, just to ensure that if there are remedial actions that can be taken to alleviate some of the traffic issues there, then I think we catch it with that study at that point in time and make any corrections that we need to. We'd also ask that the consultant at that point look internally to the site to see if there's anything that can be done to remedy some of those items as far as additional queuing and things of that nature to keep some of that traffic off of Old Oakdale Road, especially during pickup and drop-off times. I don't know if the Planning Commission had any other discussion, I know that there were comments on this.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern was, I understand it's, we're just relocating it, but that relocation is going to direct traffic, bus traffic in a different location, and if anybody has a middle school child that they drop off at any given time, that's probably the worst place that I've had to drop my daughter off, and traffic was backed up out onto Battle Ridge Road from 7:45 to 8:15, and now we're going to direct all the school bus traffic through that. Whereas right now, any school buses coming from the other side of Old Oakdale Road can turn in to go back to the bus garage where it's at now, those are all going to have to come through that traffic and make a left-hand turn. I just think it's, I think we need to do something more to address that.
We had a discussion with both the transportation director of the school district as well as Tim Maintenance Director, and we discussed this very issue. So what was described to us is, first of all, as I mentioned earlier, the physical bus drivers come in much earlier than the school district operates. So the buses hit the road, hit their routes, drop off at the three schools at varied times, so those buses are in constant circulation. So it's our understanding as well that by the time those buses then return to the bus depot, the school is already operational, so they've made their last drop-off, and then the buses would return after that final drop-off at the primary school and intermediate. So there is a staggered delay in regard to how they return. Also, I believe that was discussed, and so again, we're seeking the ability to relocate the physical bus depot from east to west, and then definitely follow up with the traffic study. Again, what we discussed here is we can't conduct the traffic study until the school is operational comes September, and there's always that break-in period. Really, it's hard to even assess traffic in that first few weeks of school until things start to balance out with pickups, new parents dropping off. So we're committed to providing a traffic study for the primary school when school is in session, and I don't think there's any argument that if there's a mitigation required, we would certainly be looking at that based on the analyses. And that was, I believe, supported by Jason and Gibson Thomas.
Thank you.
While we're on traffic, we did also ask for some turning details and whatnot just to kind of solidify some of those points, and John, I'm assuming you're okay with providing those?
Yeah, those term movements will be supplied early next week, and they're operational, they work based on the bus.
Correct.
The full-size buses.
Related to traffic, was there a highway occupancy permit required for that entrance?
That is no longer a state road there.
Correct.
It's a township road.
Battle Ridge, I believe, is still state.
Yes, it is. Battle Ridge is, yes.
Okay.
John, unless you're in objection to any of our comments, you know, I'm not going to go through all these unless you feel.
No, we take no objection on any issue. We did receive as a secondary review from the county Department of Economic Development. They had one comment relative to the ADA parking count, which I don't believe is valid. Do you agree with that?
That was our review as well, yes.
But we will address all of their comments aside from just kind of a quick explanation as to the non-validity of that one comment.
Okay. And I know that there have been staff-level discussions, and as John had indicated regarding the sidewalk waiver request, but I think that is something that we should at least come up with a plan of how that's going to be addressed prior to it reaching the board, whether or not be you have a suggestion or if you're fully in favor of, you know, not requiring the sidewalk or requiring a fee in lieu of or some portion of, or kicking it to the developer's agreement stage, but I think we should have it addressed before it gets to the board.
Sure, were there options discussed between the township and the applicant?
Well, right now, as it stands, the ordinance requires sidewalks along the frontage, which, and correct, you know, if the wording only noted Old Oakdale, it's include Battle Ridge as well. And don't quote me on the lineal footage, but it's probably an exceedance of 4,000 lineal feet.
Very close, yes.
For both?
For both, combined, yeah, which is an awful lot of sidewalk, it really is. I don't know, John, if you've estimated the cost of that, but it's.
It would be substantial, again, building it on the bus depot side just with topographic constraints, there would be a lot of earthwork, there would be retaining walls. Logistically and practically speaking, it doesn't make sense on the bus depot side, just as constructibility goes in regard to those constraints. And considering that the majority of sidewalks and those that enter the school campus, they're on the other side of the road, on the east side.
I mean, I would suggest that we make some type of provision to put something, either like you said, in a developer's agreement.
Or you can prove the modification conditionally on both sides coming to terms on what this is going to look like prior to the board taking action. And I think every discussion we've had indicates what John had noted as well. I think it's just from a practical standpoint, it makes more sense on the school campus side than the bus depot side.
Is that something that you can put in a developer's agreement to address whenever the primary school is?
We can pick the timing of it, yes, prior to occupancy of this facility, whatever the township is in favor of.
I'm fine with whatever you decide.
Yeah, as long as it's in the agreement of what it's going to be, where it's going to be, and when it's going to be installed.
Is there some minimum that we would expect, like from a planning commission perspective? Or should we, as the planning commission, try to? Just so we have an idea of what some of those options were, especially just so we understand what the minimum we would expect will come out of that.
Yeah, good evening. Couple things, maybe just to pick up on, I think we're all in favor of some type of compromise position. I think we recognize that sidewalks on Battle Ridge would be unnecessary. I think we also recognize, I don't know if you can, Abby, pull up the, anything that would show the frontage?
Yeah. The area.
It says sidewalk, Matt.
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it's in the last one on the waiver applications.
Where I was going with this was, you know, a compromise position that we spoke about when we met internally was, rather than that 4,000 lineal feet that Jason spoke about, if we're thinking about the other side of Oakdale, Old Oakdale, and only Old Oakdale, then rather than, you know, four sidewalks all the way to Battle Ridge, which is where the frontage of the bus garage parcel is, maybe just look at it from picking up at, is it Cannon Gate? And going to the school property, so drastically reducing the length of sidewalk needed, keeping it only on the school side, and having it be not the whole frontage on Old Oakdale, but only on the, if it's on the school side, only on the property boundaries, which I think are basically from Cannon Gate to the Sray property. And we did, because the idea of sidewalks along Old Oakdale has come up in our comp plan, and then we did an active transportation plan after that, kind of independent of this project, we've been working with Gibson Thomas on a feasibility plan for all of Old Oakdale, so not just this section, but the whole stretch to Pinnacle Point. And so we did, they did do some analysis that just kind of shows, you know, a recommended course of act, course for the sidewalks along with like where crossings might be, and their suggestion at this point would be to stay on the school side, take them to, I'm not saying on the school side, but take them to the Berkshires and have a crossing at that point from the Berkshire, from opposite side of the street to the Berkshires, and then from there, you'd have connections already in place all the way to Forest Ridge.
So the last part you're talking there is about comp plan, South Bay Township plan. So for this particular plan, it sounds like the two parties are trying to come up with an agreement where there would be a plan for sidewalks from Cannon Gate to the Sray property on the school side, some way, okay.
Right. I think, I mean, if it's possible to get to Battle Ridge, whether there be another crossing at Cannon Gate and come across, because there's a lot of foot traffic coming out of Battle Ridge Estates.
Yeah, I mean, what I would say to that is like, let's not throw that idea away, but I don't think we ask the district to install at those sections, because I think, you know, while they would be in the right of way, just looking at topography there, there's, you know, fences, driveways, some landscaping stuff that's in the way, and I know it's going to take a little bit of, you know, give and take with property owners to make that happen. So I think if, you know, we are able to, you know, maybe get a larger project together after this that will look to extend those sidewalks, and the township can, you know, maybe approach those property owners with that concept. I don't know, do you have, did we include, Abby, that Gibson Thomas report with sidewalks?
Yeah.
Was it on, okay. Okay. Maybe pull, sure, you can start with that one. We asked them to break this into chunks, so we actually have some cost estimates for that chunk that I spoke about, that would just be from Cannon Gate to the edge of the school property. And township is committed to, we've applied for a multimodal transit fund grant that would look to cover the costs of, in addition to the school side of it, getting it all the way to the Berkshires and potentially to that chunk at Battle Ridge. So there's phases in that first chunk, and then Abby, on the estimate pay or in the other document with the estimates, there's a calculation of school property and, you know, non-school property, if you will, for that chunk. I think they were using a number of like $35 a square, so lineal feet times five times 35 to get the, yeah, that's it. That's segment two. And then if you can just scroll down a tish, it should say. Yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, there we go. There's the, that segment two is that Cannon Gate to the Berkshires chunk that I spoke about. You know, that whole thing, construction cost-wise, looks like it's, you know, a little more than a half million with 350 of it on the school property and 160 some on the outside of it. So that is something we're actively looking for funding to help, you know, construct that first chunk.
Okay, well, I mean, that answers my questions about what it is, is the, kind of the intent of what the two parties are trying to agree upon.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't have something in my mind.
I mean, that's just a suggestion, I mean, when we met internally, that felt like a good compromise position.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then procedurally, we said that we would want to make sure that this approval is conditioned upon that being decided prior to it going to the commissioners for approval. Is that what was said? Or is that not necessary, just prior to what?
Honestly, we could frame it around the developer's agreement if both sides are comfortable with that. I don't think anyone's looking to, you know, do anything nefarious here, obviously. If we've got agreements in place, we could finalize it with the developer's agreement.
Okay, I just want to be sure that we can word it properly here.
Approve the waiver conditional on, you know, both parties agreeing to the amount of sidewalk and where it's going to be placed.
Do we need to address each waiver individually, or is it part of your review letter?
It's not part of our review letter because they were submitted after review letter, so I would suggest acting on the waivers individually in this case.
Obviously, our sidewalks won, what are the other waivers again?
The first one was the requirement for a traffic study. Second one was the requirement for traffic impact fees, which would have come from the study. And the third one was encroachment into the wetland buffer, which we're in support of that modification also. We reviewed that, and then it's a negligible item.
Which one of the wetlands was it? Was it the short one that comes right off of Old Oakdale Road where the driveway comes down?
On Old Oakdale, that come down, the topography kind of tapers into a kind of a lower depression, and that water is attenuated, and it actually infiltrates. Right there.
Right there, yep.
Yeah, you can see on the bottom of the screen, there is storm inlets along Old Oakdale, and then meander down to the first pocket. Jason, can you point to that?
Yeah.
Right there, and it's relatively small. And again, we've worked around the site constraints, as you can see, there's delineated streams. So again, it was a challenge to get the geometry to work here, but again, without impacts to streams and wetlands.
So now I don't see the topo on here, but is the road still going to be down lower than that?
That is the grading plan there, so you can see the extent of grading to construct the road. It's a series of cuts and fills, but again, at the intersection, we started elevation 1,250, and we meandered down to 1,200, so there's a 50-foot elevation difference from where the building is sitting to where Old Oakdale, the cartway is sitting.
And what's the main reason for not being closer to the property line with the entrance?
Don't repeat the question?
So the entrance off of Old Oakdale Road.
Okay.
What is the primary reason why it's not closer to the adjacent property line?
Site, actually, grading in particular.
Grading, okay.
Grading is the issue, because when we start to cut in and build that embankment, we would actually encroach on the adjoining property with our fill.
I see. Okay.
Should we make individual, uh, motions on each one of these waivers? Can we make a, a, a single motion on all the waivers? How, how should we go about that? Each one, okay.
Okay. All right, hold on a second, so. All right, and overall, we're gonna, we're gonna, you, you know, likely make a motion to accept or approve, I'm sorry, the preliminary and final land development. And then it's going to be subject to, or not subject to, with the addition of accepting waiver one, two, three. Does that sound right? Because it's not just waivers, we also have to approve the preliminary and final.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, uh, make a motion to approve each individual waiver first.
Okay.
And then make a motion for the, the overall.
That makes sense. You have anything else, Jamie? Any other questions?
No, I think we're on the right track.
Good. Sidewalk?
Two fifteen sixty-seven is the section. It's waiver three.
Traffic study was one.
Traffic impact fee.
Was two, and then sidewalk must be three, and then wetlands four.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for the traffic study.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That, uh, motion is approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for the traffic impact fee.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion's approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for the sidewalks, um, in accordance with the, developer agreement. Exactly.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion's approved.
And I will make a motion to approve the, uh, waiver for the encroachment on wetlands.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved also. All right, and did we have a motion to approve the preliminary and final land development application for this item?
Still moved.
Moved by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion's approved. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much for all this. See you in a couple of months with the primary school.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, moving on with new business. We have new business B, review and discuss SP zero-two twenty-twenty-five, Tractor Supply Newberry Preliminary and Final Land Development Application, Parcel one-nine-seven R-three-zero is on PED. We have our construction of Tractor Supply infiltration basement, basin, two infiltration trenches, a garden center, and display pads. And we have our applicant.
Good evening. Tyson Miller, KU Resources Civil Engineer, project.
Hi, Matthew and Durante, on behalf of MSP Development, the developer of this tractor supply.
Tyson, if you could just kind of explain, you know, where you're doing the projects, you know, some of the items of the, uh, interior and exterior. And then, uh, I think after you kind of adequately explain it, I'd like to inform the board of the actions that have already been taken through the zoning hearing board for this project.
So, uh, on, on the site plan in front of you, the, you can see that the Tractor Supply store is kind of the top middle of the page. It's a, it's a rectangular shape, yep, right where Abby is circling there. Uh, to the right of that on the page is the outdoor garden center. Uh, also within that space is where the propane, uh, sales would be. Uh, you can see the parking, a variety of different parking, uh, in the front. Um, and then just on the far, the bottom right of the parking field is the, is the outdoor trailer display. As mentioned, there's some, some outdoor display areas that are all along the front, both the front of the store and the garden center. So where this site is located, just at the bottom of the page, you'll see, uh, the, the Cigars International Building, which is recently opened. And off to the left of the page, which isn't shown, but that blank white space there, uh, that would be, that would be Topgolf. So Topgolf, uh, on the left-hand side, uh, cigar, uh, you know, cigars in the front, uh, this, this tractor supply. And then, and then, uh, Shortiers Creek runs along, uh, what's on the right-hand side of the page and then around to the rear. Uh, the infiltration pond, as, uh, as mentioned, that's also in the rear of the building. So that's situated between the rear of the building and Shortiers Creek. Jason's gonna go into, to, to some of the variances that are granted, but one of them was for parking. So, you know, we, we did have more parking than, than Tractor Supply traditionally needs. Um, uh, but we were about eight spaces short based on the zoning code. So that was one of the, the, the variances that was granted. But, uh, as you know, there's, you know, there's, uh, a bit of a glut of parking on, on there. I know that was one of the questions in the traffic letter about the requirement for Topgolf. Uh, I think Topgolf was required to have about three hundred spaces and they have about four hundred. So that's, you know, how we were able to accommodate a, a cross easement for cigars previously. Here, all the parking is, is contained within the, the property boundary. So no, no easements were required for that. Um, there were utilities that were extended on what's called Holland Street, which is the, the road that's between cigars and a municipal authority building. Um, so, you know, as, as part of some of the previous master plans, this particular parcel was going to be two buildings, but, you know, now we have one user that's going to take the, the entire remainder of that parcel, which is a little bit under three acres. So, um, so Holland Street will end where it is and then that really, it, so the street will flow through, but it, it will ce- cease to be, and they're all private streets down there, but it will cease to be a street and really just turn into the, to the main drive aisle. Um, do you want to talk a little bit about, I mean, do you need an explanation about what Tractor Supply does and what, what they do? Or is the?
I don't. I'm, I'm fine with it.
So were those two zoning variances that were described, or was it more than two?
There were five, actually.
Okay.
You know, and I did incorporate them into our letter. Tyson did include them on the cover sheet, which is a requirement. I can go through those real quick if you'd like.
Yeah, just, I can get them in my head again, but the parking was one.
The first one was to reduce the required number of parking spaces from eighty-seven to seventy-six. And that was granted.
Okay, and those seventy-six, I think you said, fit on your area.
Within the, the entire.
So even though you mentioned Topgolf, you're not counting any of those.
That's correct.
Part, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the second was to increase the allowable fence height in a commercial district from eight feet to sixteen feet.
And that's around the garden center. So they have a, a taller fence, uh, which would be on the three sides closest to Shortiers Creek.
Uh, the third one was to allow an internally illuminated ground sign.
So in the PED, internally illuminated ground signs are not allowed. Just for a little bit of history, the zoning hearing board had granted one for Tesla previously, so they begrudgingly granted one here as well, uh, given that precedent, but, you know, not an obtrusive, you know, because we're talking about a very small, a small sign here.
Uh, the fourth one was to allow the garden center sign of eighty-one point seven zero square feet, where forty-six square feet is allowed based on two hundred and thirty square feet of garden canopy structure face.
So to articulate that one, and we'll actually, Abby, could you flip to the architectural, uh, elevations, please? So the, the zoning officer, you know, ruled that the garden center sign air, allowable area should only be based on that structure in which that sign is located, which is an outdoor, basically canopy. Um, you know, part of our argument was that, you know, it's, well, it's two things. One, the, the, the main Tractor Supply store sign is less than the allowable that would be for that wall face of that main building. But two, really, the whole facade of the building in the, in, in these, you know, you've been to Lowe's, you've probably been to other Tractor Supplies. You know, it, it really is one kind of, one integrated kind of front-facing facade. So, uh, anyway, but, but so that, so that variance is, you can see the little gray triangle there on the upper right. That's really the allowable sign face area, but, um, again, so that's, that articulates that.
And then the last one was to allow a one hundred and ninety-two square foot internally illuminated wall sign in the rear where illumination is not permitted. So that sums up the, the, the five that they requested. They were granted all of them. Correct, Tyson?
Um, no, that, that one was not granted and we actually changed it to the side.
That was on your cover sheet in that regard. And we did, I did want to note also, these were relayed to us verbally and obviously on their plan, but the zoning hearing board has not provided a written.
So that, that actually one, that, that one was actually, uh, denied, uh, and then actually, instead of being on the rear, we did move it to the side because you can't actually see the rear from, from seventy-nine. You can't see.
That was approved outside or still denied?
It was, the, the internal, the internal illumination portion was the, the variance and that was denied. So it will be kind of, as you see, if you zoom, zoom, roll into that sign, there's like gooseneck lights on it that illuminate it, which are allowed. It's just not allowed to be internally illuminated.
Okay. Okay. But the plans we have have the signs in the right locations. Like the side, the, the run, it's shown on the side of the plan or is it?
If you scroll down. That is the, that is the old one. So that, that, that sign that was, that, uh, in that lower elevation there would be on the side of the building. So, um, it would be, if you just scroll up just a little bit. We did.
While she's doing that, real quick, I'm just curious, sixteen for the fencing, what was, what's the purpose?
Just their standard.
Okay. Is it mainly safety or is it?
Safety, yeah.
Or, or security of products, really.
You have high racking back in that area or something?
That as well, yes.
Okay.
And there's a, there, you know, we did talk about what, what kind of, you know, screening would be in that, uh, which would, you know, would be vinyl slat type, type screening.
Got it.
We updated the site. But so, so it, it would be on this, the second elevation. So that sign would be on, on that, yeah.
Essentially, it's just a second doghouse that we see in front of the building. One on the side of the building, since it sits.
Yeah, the one in the rear, just because of how the road curves and plus the giant sign that Collier's just built, you'd never, you'll never, you'll never see. See that one in the rear side.
Okay.
So you didn't get granted the internal illumination, so you're gonna just externally illuminate it?
And the primary reason why you relocated was just?
Visibility.
Better see from seventy-nine. Okay.
And we do expect that letter from the zoning hearing board attorney any day, so it will be ahead of the next board meeting as well. So we'll get on the same page with those items. Outside of that, Tyson, I mean, most of the items in our letter were procedural type items. Uh, we did have some stormwater management, uh, items, but I'm assuming you're okay with addressing those?
Yeah, just got the letter today, but, uh, but yes, we, we, at least based on what our review, I didn't see anything that we were concerned about.
And, and just for?
Traffic letter. Uh, that's why I mentioned the Topgolf, because what was one of the comments from, from the traffic engineer was that we are using some of the spaces that have been pre- previously built, but they are actually on this property. So, uh, I can't recall off the top of my head if that was included in the traffic count for Topgolf, but I know that we at least discussed and, and looked it up during the zoning hearing board that, again, Tractor, or, uh, Topgolf was required to have about three hundred and they had, you know, in about approximately four hundred. So it was, it was, you know, well in excess of what was needed. So, so whether or not those sixteen spaces were included in Topgolf or not is really, you know, uh, not, not an issue from the overall parking count.
Tyson, this might be out of your direct knowledge, but Cigars International, does that play a role in any of that parking overlap?
Um, well, so, so Cigars International got a variance, caught me on the exact number, thirty-two or thirty-eight spaces somewhere in that.
Okay, got it.
Ballpark, so yeah, we're still comfortably.
Okay. Thank you.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and one of the other things we talked to the zoning hearing board is, you know, the, there is a provision in the, in the, in the zoning ordinance for, for shared parking, right, based on different types of uses.
Yep.
And the reality is that the, the Tractor Supply peak times are going to be different than Topgolf and Cigars peak times as well. So, you know, in, inherently, you, there is a ten percent reduction that you could, you could claim. We didn't ma- you know, we didn't portray that because the, 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 the zoning code requires that to be under one property owner.
Okay.
The reality is that that's not the case, but there is, there are master declarations, you know, with a variety of different access and, and, and parking cross easements in it. But again, we feel that there's, there's more than enough, particularly on, on this side.
Okay, thank you. Tyson, you alluded to it, but Gateway provided a traffic review with, with a handful of clarification items. Do you have any issue beyond what you talked about?
Yeah, we'll provide the truck turning movements, uh, you know, just, just to talk about two of the items there. You know, one of the i- items they asked for was to, you know, to prove that we have access, uh, through the, the, the parking aisle, uh, which is between cigars and Topgolf, and that's all covered in the master declaration. That's no big deal. We, we, um, um, you know, we have the truck turn, the truck coming in off of Holland Street and, and kind of backing into the loading area that's on the side of the building.
Can we bring up a, a drawing that shows the overall traffic flow best? Is it, as it integrates into the other adjoining parcels or do we not have?
Uh, I did not provide it. That was one of the comments. I, I mean, I can articulate that for you if you want. So the, the trucks would enter, uh, you know, where, where, if you're coming from Carvana, let's say, and you go over the bridge, there's a slight bend as you approach Holland Street. Uh, so, you know, the truck would be, would be pulling, would be pulling into Holland Street, kind of driving between cigars and, uh, and the municipal authority building. It would pull in straight towards the front door of the building, turn to the right and then back into the loading zone that's on the right-hand, or excuse me, on the left-hand side of the building as you see it here. So, you know, again, we'll, we'll provide that truck turning template, but that's the anticipated truck movement. And then it just reverses when it, when it goes to leave.
Tyson, there was also a review letter from Allegheny County Economic Development. They had a few clarification items as well. Did you have a chance to review that?
Yeah, uh, you know, he has, there's one aside comment about development in the floodplain that's not really restricted by the, the township. Tree sizes, there's no trees. There are no trees within the, the development area. There's trees on the banks of the, of the.
Why they say pasture area?
Now, they called out a few of the sign items that you already got relief from, but, uh, outside of that, no, we didn't have any concerns with their letter either.
Here?
Think it would be coming in right through here.
Okay.
Addressed everything else that we had, uh, within our letter.
Can you just scroll down, scroll down just a little bit?
Tyson, do you want to maybe explain why you had to do stormwater management on this parcel when a lot of the previous developments recently within Newberry did not have to?
Yes, well, that's a bit of a sore subject, but I will, I will, uh, I will explain that to say that, you know, we have a valid NPDS permit that's essentially, the validity has been challenged by the, the, the DEP and the Conservation District, even though those are the entities that issued said permit. And we are reevaluating the stormwater management across the entire, um, commercial development. The, the remaining parcels to be developed and we're submitting a, an updated permit. Um, and so this is the only portion of the site where Topgolf and cigars and where this site will be that's allowed to infiltrate. The, the balance of the site, you know, where, where, uh, BJ's and Carvana is, all, all that, um, as, as many of you know, was a chemical plant and, uh, you know, has environmental contaminants that have previously been capped over. So infiltration is, is frowned upon in that area, so meeting stormwater, uh, requirements in that area is very difficult. So we've, we've overdesigned, uh, really, which was the plan all along, that, that, there's a ve- very large underground pond next to Topgolf. Uh, there's an underground pond next to cigars. And then we have, actually have, in this case, where we were able to have the room to have a surface infiltration pond. to have a surface infiltration pond, uh, behind behind this building. So so again, we're trying to maximize the amount of stormwater management we can provide on this property, uh, to try to meet those stormwater management goals for the the remaining parts of the development.
I don't have any further comments.
I'm still a little bit confused of where Holland Street is in in reality. Yeah. So those spot, those parking spots on the left are the Topgolf ones on the far left, right?
Yeah, this is Topgolf parking field. This is the, this is the back of Cigars building, that's Cigars patio. Here's Cigars rear parking.
What, okay, their rear parking, what's the big square?
That's the subsurface stormwater system.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, so, yeah, it looks like it's either very faint or wasn't on, isn't on here, but that curb line, you can see the two inlets. So this is Holland Street right here. So right now, there's a temporary wedge curb right, right there, where it terminates. So that would be, uh, removed, the temporary wedge curb would be removed. Like I said originally, Holland Street probably would have extended out to like here, but there's no reason to make that part of the street because this is really just part of that parking lot.
Okay. Okay, and then, once you get to the new end of Holland Street, the section that's perpendicular there, that's?
This is all their parking, all Tractor Supplies parking on on this side of this main drive aisle or this side.
Okay, and then right above that is not parking?
This is parking right in front of the store.
Now, between those two, that great, that that's like road or?
That's a main drive aisle.
Okay, that's the main drive.
The trucks coming in, you're getting, it's coming over the bridge, turning onto Holland Street. It's coming in, pulls this way and backs into that.
So the width of that dr- main drive aisle is?
This, this one is extra wide.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with this is because is 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 Holland Street wide enough to accommodate what's going on back there?
It's twenty-four through, yeah.
It's twenty-four feet wide, so it's the same as all the others.
Okay. Got it.
And the main drive, the main aisle in front of the store is wider than that. It is wider than twenty-four feet, just a little higher.
Okay.
And that dark shaded area is like just?
All asphalt.
Asphalt for for being able to turn, to make maneuver that turn.
Yeah.
Right here.
Ah, okay, hashed, okay.
Yeah, you see, there's three angled spaces for folks with trailers, so they're oversized parking spaces. And then there's a ha- hashed out striped area to the left of that, um, that just, again, facilitates the truck being able to to turn in and make that, make that turn.
Yeah. All right, and then on the left side, when you get over to where that gray area ends up against parking, is that curbed or anything, or is that just open into the parking?
Um, are you saying right, right in this area?
Yes.
There's a curb here, so these parking spaces are separated.
Yep.
From the loading zone by a curb. This is just showing, we just have to do some regrading of this just to get all the tines to work. This is the main drive, this is a drive aisle that services all the parking spaces for cigars.
So you can come out of your main drive aisle and get to another drive aisle in Topgolf parking?
Correct, yeah.
Got it.
If you were Tractor Supply and you wanted to go over to Topgolf, you could come out and gone down this dri- drive aisle and get. That was one of the questions in the traffic engineer's letter. Do we have the rights to access this drive aisle? And that's covered in the master declaration for for the site.
So is there? One second. So what I'm looking at now, an aerial of that area, it seems like where you're connecting is going into. Is this it right here, right there?
No, that, um.
Because this knockout with these spots are, is that knockout up there?
Reflecting cigars.
Okay.
Yeah, so cigars probably property comes out to that here.
Okay.
You can see the billboard.
Yeah, so then my question is, that gray area that comes out, where's it coming out? Up here somewhere?
Up there, yeah.
About where, about here?
It's, it's about right, about right here. You can see this, this aisle, well, the curb line.
Okay.
It's coming out right in.
So that's what I don't understand. It appears it's coming into parking as opposed to a drive aisle.
So these, so these parking spaces, several of these parking spaces get removed. And 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 then, so so.
Okay.
Here.
Okay, that's, that's what seems very confusing to me.
There's parking here, and right now it's parking all the way up.
Right.
And we're removing the parking from here to here to accommodate these two.
Okay.
That's what we said earlier, there was, there was parking on their property that was put in whenever Topgolf was.
Yeah, so there's, there's like forty spaces that were put on the cigars slash this, this, this parcel here that were built at the same time as Topgolf, but not on Topgolf's property. And we have the right to rearrange, remove, assign this space.
Okay.
So yes, both, so again, yes, we're moving about all other spaces to accommodate the two drive aisles to be able to interconnect in the perpendicular drive aisle, the one between Topgolf and Cigars.
Okay, so it feels like those are probably lost somewhere in calculations, I would think. Yeah, those eleven are counted probably for three different properties down there, and now they're going to be gone, so I think.
Like I tell you, they weren't, they weren't counted as part of the cigar. Yeah, they probably weren't counted.
Okay, and then is there a thought or concern that these, the trucks and the traffic that's coming to tractor is going to come down the drive aisle and turn right into Tractor Supply as opposed to using Holland Street? Do we care? Does it matter?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're asking about passenger vehicles, then then no. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we care. In terms of the truck, I know that that's part of the agreements that we're working on with the with the declarations with the rest of the property owners, so that will be dictated to to only use Holland Street.
That's correct. And once, and this will be also within our lease for Tractor Supply that they have a set truck path that they have to follow.
And it's not that many trucks?
No, uh, this site is predicted to be a little bit busier, so maybe once a week, at most twice a week.
Okay. So as part of what is that agreement? Is that just a a policy within Tractor Supply or is that an agreement? Okay, all right, you said that, I didn't catch it. Good, I got you. And and again, that's for trucks coming in and out for the purpose of inventory and things for Tractor Supply. Okay. Okay. All right, yeah, without having the the larger view of how this touched into Topgolf and things, I was a little bit confused. So I appreciate you taking the time and explaining that. No, I'm good now. Then, one more thing. So sometimes fire and safety gets involved, especially when we don't have good access around back. Is that addressed by whoever normally addresses that within our?
But you are, yeah, you go back to second. So, you know, we have to have insurance in that gray patch, you know, the loading area. But there is, there is the paper route. There is access around all three sides.
Okay. So this pa- I see the pass-through area that goes through the.
There's also pass-through.
And then when it goes around the back. Yeah, I was talking about the one that goes through the garden center and then goes back and turns left and goes around what I would call the back of the building or is that a side? Okay. So I'm visioning the garden center. No car is going to go through there, that's fenced. But when you say pass-through, is that a big gate or is it just kind of open?
Yeah.
But there's.
Large gate, like Seattle was.
And then.
Probably big enough to fit a vehicle, but.
Right, and then what about on the other side?
Preparing to come on.
Yeah.
And then the top left corner of what we're looking at there, is that just open or is that gate?
I'm sorry?
The top, yeah, right about where the cursor is, right in there. Is that just open to drive into or is that gated?
That's where the dumpster are, so there, yeah, there's a, there's a curb. Right now, we have a curb, so you can't drive from the Topgolf parking lot into there. You you have to go down this loading zone area. Um, but I don't think that there's a fence there, so.
Yeah.
You know, there'll be signage to say the delivery only or something like that, but it's not fenced off.
Okay. So I need to kind of reset on this one. So we're on preliminary and final land development for this one. And there were a number of zoning hearing variances, but that's not for us to act on. You were just letting us know that they were there.
Correct.
And you didn't have anything significant on this?
No, just the items within our letter, the items within Gateway's letter, and I would also reference the Allegheny County review as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve SP zero two twenty twenty-five, Tractor Supply Newberry, preliminary and final land development application, subject to the Gibson Thomas review letter dated seven seventeen twenty-five, the Allegheny County review letter dated seven eighteen twenty twenty-five, and who's the, um, who's the engineer? Gateway and the Gateway Engineer Review Letter.
Dated seven ten twenty-five.
Correct.
All right, we have motion.
Waiting on variances from zoning hearing board. Does that matter?
We'll get the written decision, we'll incorporate it, yep.
All right, Doc, can we get a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, that motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have new business C and D. New business C, review and discuss S zero five twenty twenty-five, South Bay Commons, preliminary and final minor subdivision application, parcel two five six S nine, zone C two. Doing these separate?
You know what, Tom? We received, uh, a communication through the Township Planning Office for a request to table this application.
Both?
Both.
All right, so let me just mention that we're also referring to new business D, review and discuss SP zero three twenty twenty-five, South Bay Commons, preliminary and final land development application, parcel two five six S nine, zone C two. So new business C and D, um, you received a letter asking to.
To table the application to the next meeting.
Okay, anything significant you want to mention related to that?
Nope.
All right, can we get a motion to table new business C and D, please?
I'll say yes.
Okay, take those together. Questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, C and D for new business are tabled. And acceptance of applications, we have none. Eight, open discussion. All right, let's get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.